2021 to order Ms. Hamilton, if you'll begin with a roll call, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharma.
Here.
Commissioner Harrington.
Here.
Commissioners Idler.
Here.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Count Chairperson White.
Here.
Just to note, all council members are present. I'm sorry, Commissioners are present. That was a slip.
We got enough for you.
Too much for us right? Are there any orders of the day?
Thanks for the promotion, Jeannie.
I was on, I was on the council meeting last night, so I'm still recovering from that. Orders of the day as are as per the agenda, no changes requested.
Great. All right. I don't know if there's anybody in our audience tonight that is here, independent of what is agendized for us, which is approval of a tentative parcel map at 1-8061 Saratoga Las Casas Road. But if you're here for some other reason, this is an opportunity for you to be heard. We'll limit your comments to three minutes. But if anybody wants to speak on a subject other than that, which is on the agenda tonight, please use the raise hand feature so we know to call on you. Okay, I see that the strikers have a hand up. I don't know if they want to speak on the agenda item or our public comment portion, so we'll give them an opportunity right now.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I raised the hand and posted the question because I joined a couple of minutes early and couldn't, hadn't heard anything. So I'll speak later when the topic is up for 18061.
Thanks on the agenda. Okay, no problem. All right, we'll call you later. Then at this moment, we have an opportunity to entertain a motion. I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to. I have reviewed the minutes from our March 3 meeting. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes from last. What's the date again?
March 3.
Third March.
Meeting.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you. We will do a roll call, please, Ms. Hamilton.
Commissioner Harrington.
Hi.
Commissioner Sharma.
Hi.
Commissioners Idler.
Hi.
Commissioner Booker.
Hi.
Chairperson White.
Hi.
That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
I'm going to take an opportunity to, if, if you'll permit me to read the meeting rules.
This is great.
That we didn't do. Sorry. Okay, so Commissioner, staff and meeting participants, thank you for joining us this evening for the March 17, 2021, Monte Sereno Site and Architectural Commission meeting. I'd like to point out a few things to assist Commission members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Commissioners, please keep your microphones muted until you wish to speak. You have a hot mic. For this commission meeting, we're using Zoom to host the meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please use the raise hand if you would like to be recognized and enabled to speak to the commission by the chairperson. Comments in the chat feature will not be part of the public record. For the public to comment under oral communications, which you've already passed, or on any agenda item, in addition to using the raise hand feature, emails can be submitted to the city planner, limited to 350 words, and they will be read into the record. This limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participation from a telephone will allow for listening only and does not allow for any feedback. And finally, because we're not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. We'll give you a moment to catch your breath. We have to introduce our one and only agendized item, which is 1-8061 Saratoga Las Casas Road. You can provide us with a brief introduction. We can begin.
Thank you. What you have before you is an application for a tentative parcel map for two lots for the little over half acre site at 1-8061 Saratoga Los Gatos Road. And I apologize for the typographical error on the staff report in the heading. This proposal again is to subdivide the existing one lot into two separate and distinct lots, more in a flag lot configuration with a 20-foot wide drive access used by both the, the front part of it used by the front lot one, and then continuing back for lot two, and also serves as a fire truck access and turnaround, given the depth of the lot. The proposal includes the front lot, fronting on Saratoga Los Gatos Road, which is approximately 9,641 square feet, and the rear lot, which is approximately 1304, 13,492 square feet. The minimum lot size for this property, which is zoned R18, is 8,000 square feet. There, unlike the previous project to the west, the average slope on this property is less than 10%, so there's no alteration to the minimum lot size. As you can read through the staff report, I did present an analysis of how the proposal does comply or is consistent with the various goals and policies of the general plan that would apply to a subdivision, as well as the more technical zoning and subdivision regulations. The front lot meets the minimum lot frontage of 70 feet on Highway 9. And the rear lot, because it is considered an irregular lot, does meet the minimum required 35 feet on a means of access, which is that private driveway corridor. The, this project, there was a mitigated negative declaration completed for the project. And should the commission have any questions related to that environmental review? We do have the consultant that prepared the environmental document on it. The subsequent to the subdivision, this project will have to come back through the approval process for the site development for both of the properties. And we'll come back before the commission for a recommendation to the city council. Per our subdivision ordinance, the city council does have final site and architectural review authority over properties within the scenic or subdivisions within the scenic corridor. So that will be a separate process that it will go through. Again, I think as you can see from the staff report, this proposal did work to minimize the grading. And should they follow through with the conceptual designs, would be looking to create more basement area or, or push the home down into the property. Because again, similar, if you remember the last project, there is a limitation to height for subdivisions along the scenic corridor in that they're limited to 15 feet above the highest point of the natural grade before any grading happens. So that does aid in kind of keeping the homes a little down. The, the rear property can take advantage of some of that slope to again, maybe create a daylight basement or whatnot. But again, the final designs for that will come back before the commission and council for final approval. So from what staff's review of this, we are recommending that the Site and Architectural Commission recommend to the city council that they approve this tentative parcel map in that it is consistent with the general plan, goals and policies, and land use designation of single-family residential, which is three to five dwelling units per acre. The proposed tentative parcel map complies with the development standards of the R18 zoning district and meets all the applicable requirements of the city's subdivision regulations. And with that, I'm available for any questions. And if there are any questions related to the environmental review, our consultant is here to answer any questions.
Jeannie, I have a question. This is Allison Seider. So first, one typo that might be worth changing on that staff recommendation on the third page, next to policy LU 1.3, the furthest box to the right, it says the proposed three lot subdivision. It's near the top corner of the page. If you want to change that to two, if this becomes part of the record.
Thank you.
And then my question was, I was trying to picture, I think the project's attractive and, you know, unobtrusive on the scenic corridor. And, you know, it's great their community uses native trees and all that. I had no hesitation. I just had a kind of a traffic flow question, and I don't know if now's the time or later. But this gated driveway, I live off of Highway 9. And when I pull to my street, as I slow down, I just about get rear-ended half the time. And I just wonder if the future homeowner would be able to get off Highway 9, get this gate open and get through it without it being unsafe. The fire truck turnaround obviously really helps, and that's wonderful. I, my concern is really just about having the closed gate and whether it would open in time. And then also, if someone turns in error, such that they're not open, able to open the gate because they don't live there and have to get back out onto Highway 9, is that doable? Given, it visually looks like kind of a short approach to the gate, but that's kind of my question, how that all works.
The, the city's policy relative to the distance back from the edge of pavement for any gates is a minimum 20 feet. And that allows for a car to pull off even without the gate open to get out of. There are, this being more of a driveway, so ideally, you know, you're not going to have a lot of people pulling into it in error. I can't say that you won't, but again, it's not going to be, look like a, like a street entrance, like all the other, you know, drives that are along there. So ideally, we wouldn't have that issue. It's, it is as opposed to the adjacent subdivision that was approved, which has an actually 40-foot wide cul-de-sac. There's an instance where people might pull into it in error, but then they'll be able to turn around in that. The driveway being much narrower, you may not, if they did pull into it, similar to any other driveway situation that's out there now, they would have to take the time to safely back out. That's really all I can say for that. And, you know, there are, sometimes it just takes patience on Highway 9 because there are times where there is nobody coming or going. But it's really understanding that roadway and being able to view down. And I think they did do a, you know, the traffic study that says, similar to the adjacent property, there is a line of sight down Highway 9 sufficient to make safe entrance and exits. And there is that, there is the center turn lane there also.
Oh, that would help also.
That's existing.
Ms. Hamilton, I had the same concern that Commissioner Ziedler had about the the driveway there and the gate. When this comes back before us for approval of the actual plans for the improvements there, will we have an opportunity to evaluate the gate at that juncture?
Yeah, yes.
And at the same time, I see references in the staff report to landscaping. We would also be reviewing landscaping and screening for early neighbors at that time as well.
Generally, yes. Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions from Ms. Hamilton?
So just along the same, same lines, this is Paul Levine. So same, similar question. So when this comes back to us, that's when we would be able to see the kind of trees that are proposed as replacements for the trees that are being removed right now for the access.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be specific to, I don't know if they, they just, we'll ask them to be a little more specific with the actual tree species. On C1, they do talk about 24-inch box approved trees. But again, at the site development permit stage, we'll ask them to be specific with the species type.
Okay, thank you.
And I have just a quick question on the six-foot wall on the east side of the property itself. I noticed that along the backside of the property, there's a good neighbor fence or something that will be agreed to by, I guess, the neighbors. Is that, is that pretty consistent with the way these, these, these developments work? I mean, because I, I noticed that on the top, on the aerial map, there seems to be neighbors on the east side of this wall as well, but one, maybe one lot, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. But I was just curious as to the design of that and the consistency of it, that's all.
Again, that, that wall will be subject to discretionary review as to it along the western property line.
Is it the western side?
Yeah, it's western.
My map upside down.
But, you know, if it's all on the subject property, they don't need to get approval with the adjacent property owner. If they're looking to place it on the property line and it's, it's in line with the fence regulations, then they need to be working with that property owner to get agreement for that common property line, fencing or wall. Anytime you put fencing or any sort of wall on the property line, you need to be working with your neighbors. There's nothing to say that you can't set it in six inches and then not have to do that same sort of coordination.
Right, okay. I was just, yeah, I mean, I would imagine there'll be some public comment on that.
But, but the wall that's within the frontage, that front setback, that is subject to discretionary review. So the, the details of that and its actual location will be, because I don't believe that that's a requirement from the noise standpoint for that rear yard area for the lot one.
Yeah, that's three, three-foot wall, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Jeannie, I have a question about, and I think this came up with the last subdivision that we did next to this. I was, my understanding that the city wasn't allowing flag lots. Am I imagining that? It just seemed like that came up in the subject of the conversation because they had to dedicate a portion of that lot to be that cul-de-sac for the other.
No. There, well, there is no written policy that I could find in the subdivision regulations relative to a means of access and how many lots can occur based on that means of access. One of the, one of the keys is really that whatever lot you have has to meet a frontage requirement. And, you know, there are some other lots on Highway 9 that are less than, you know, 70, one of them is 75 feet wide. Well, when you have a 70-foot wide frontage and then you need that 20-foot wide means of access at a minimum, you don't have enough to do that. So, you know, technically, there is no written, adopted or codified policy or regulations prohibiting the proposed subdivision as presented before you.
There's nothing in there saying that we're, I mean, yes, we have lots in the city that are less than 70 feet, but there's nothing in there saying that we shouldn't approve lots that are irregular 35 feet.
No.
All right.
Any other questions from Ms. Hamilton? Okay, let's afford the applicant an opportunity to speak before the commission. See Mr. Karchgani's in our audience, and I know he is an applicant. I don't know if there's anybody else here on his behalf, but I'm happy to hear from an applicant or applicant's representative.
Tony Jeans is the applicant's representative.
Okay, great. I see Mr. Jeans has his hand raised up. Go ahead, Mr. Jeans.
Yes, I wondered if it would be possible to display my screen. Could someone allow screen sharing?
We're getting that set up. It should, it should work.
You should be able to see the front page of the plans. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name's Tony Jeans. Thank you very much. So I was given the opportunity to develop this, and I've tried to work from the end back to the beginning. In other words, I wanted to try to make sure that what was designed would work well from a housing standpoint and not just design a lot split that would work. So if you look at the top two pictures, even though we are not focusing on the actual style of the houses at the moment, you can see the approach that I'm trying to take. I'm trying to keep as many mature trees as possible. I am replacing the existing wooden wall, which is further into the street, and moving it back to the property line so that there would be a 30-inch-high stone wall at the front. I'm then looking at putting a six-foot-high sound wall along the front, which the noise consultant said was a requirement. And also where it continues down the west side of the property, that was also a requirement from the noise consultant. The distance between the street and the gate is 30 feet. So I'm trying to give plenty of room for people to be able to maneuver and not just creep in and get rear-ended. It is actually identical to the already existing gate on the house next door. So I'm trying to be consistent so that two houses don't look silly next to each other. So this is looking at it as you would approach driving into the driveway. This is looking at it a little more obliquely. The gate is here. Saratoga Los Gatos Road is here, and you would pull in and the gate will open. The first house would have a garage immediately inside when I get around to coming back to you. And the second house would drive back to their house and garage in the rear lot. So if you look at the bottom area in terms of layout, now I'm looking at it the other way around. So this is Saratoga Los Gatos Road on the right-hand side. The driveway is at the back. This is a turnaround here. And what I'm trying to do is within this lot, get as much separation as possible between the houses so that they're not on top of one another. So I feel that with a lot that is over half an acre with an 8,000-foot minimum requirement, what I've done is on the front house, I've taken that down to 9,500. This rear lot is actually about 13,000 plus the access corridor. And I did that because I wanted to pull the house as far forward as possible because there are some really good mature trees in the backyard. And also, I did not want to be on top of the neighbors. So that was where I was coming from when I started laying out this project. Does anyone have any questions on this page?
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
I'm going to shoot down to the site plan. This is the topographic survey as it is now with one house at the front. There's almost the same amount of turnaround and driveway area as we are proposing. So it doesn't change the impervious coverage much. I'm going to go to this page here, which is a site plan. So now you're looking down directly on top of the, the site. Saratoga Los Gatos Road is down here. Here is the gate, just in line with that column there is the neighbor's gate. So I'm putting the garage at the front. I'm keeping a fairly front-forward house, but I'm maintaining one very large oak tree and another oak tree here. I am planning on removing a redwood over here and an ash tree. And those trees make it really prohibitive to develop the property. And also on this side of the fence, that was the subdivision that got approved, the three lot subdivision that got approved. And there is a retaining wall along the fence line here, which, when it was approved, was somewhat taller. It was about a five or six feet high wall, and my fence would have been on top of it. The grading has changed. They, you'll be pleased to hear that they, they're reducing the grading a little bit and elevating things. So this will be about, be about a four-foot-high wall with my fence on top. And the, the sound requirement is all the way through down to about here. And I just extended it to the end of the the usable yard. As to the second house, you come in here, this red area, the red dotted line is the fire truck turnaround. So that is required for, for good fire access and prevention. So I've got guest parking at the front house. I've got guest parking here. I could park there and still leave that open. You can see all the trees that I'm leaving in the backyard here. So all of these larger trees are existing trees that I am trying to design around. I'm taking one tree out here, which is unfortunate, but it's in a very awkward spot. This one is really nice, and so are the neighbor's redwoods, which I am trying to not impact at all. And I've spoken to the neighbor at the rear here and communicated with this neighbor over here. I have two neighbors on the rear property. I, you're right in that I have one neighbor on this side. I've also communicated with them vis a vis putting a good neighbor fence along this property line as well as this one here. I haven't yet spoken to Annette about what we should do along this property line. I was waiting to see how her subdivision driveways and everything went in. But I am in touch with Annette and will talk to her, whoever gets there first. So this is an interesting house. The, the driveway kind of slopes up a little. So what I have, I'm entering at the main level, but then there's a level. So what I have, I'm entering at the main level, but then there's a level below it, which is more appropriate because the grade of the property falls off towards the rear. If I were showing you the, let's show you this plan here. You can see the same thing, and you can see these contours. And this is showing that it, it is actually sloping down. So I'm driving up to here. My garage is at the main, at the upper level, main level. And then I have a family area and some bedrooms below, which is how I've done that in order to minimize my grading. I did not want to grade, and in fact, if you look at the table over here, you'll see I'm about 1,000 yards of combined cut and fill, 700 yards of cut. Most of that actually is in the basement in, in this front residence. I'm doing a daylight basement here. And you can see that on parcel one, a big chunk of my yardage is really that basement. You don't normally count that, but at the macro level, I've got about 700 yards of cut and some fill and about 350 of export because of the basement. So if I go back to here, you had some questions about the driveway, the gate. I've answered that. Fencing, I've answered that. The wall at the front, this wall is the wall that has to be six feet high and down to here according to the noise consultant to get the decibel volume from highway noun down to a manageable level for this house. And those were the main points. I, I mean, I've got, I, I'm not planning on really getting into details of, of the housing. This is, you have it in the plans. It'll change somewhat, but conceptually, that is what I'm looking at doing. So back to here, and if you have any questions, please shoot.
Mr. Jeans, that, so that, that front house, the backyard, if you will, if they're going to eat outside or that kind of thing, would be where it says artificial turf. Is that right?
Yes.
And what are the dimensions of that area roughly?
Oh. I've got about.
It doesn't need to be exact. I was just trying to picture that as a usable outdoor space.
Oh.
And the size.
It's a good size. The width of this entire property is 97 feet from corner to corner. So this looks to me as though it's about 40. This looks as though the length is about, yeah, just shy of 60 at the long point. So it's a nice, it's a nice area. And what I've tried to do here, because this is a turnaround, I would put a fence along here that would be semi-seethrough, not, not a, not a property line divider fence, probably vertical slats with some spacing and greenery on this side of it so that I would have a nice attractive vista looking from this house out. And also this would not be just a, you know, a, a good neighbor fence. It would, it would look nice.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions for Mr. Jeans? Thank you, Mr. Jeans, very much.
Thank you. I will, you can grab my sharing. I'm stopping sharing.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the applicant want to speak in addition to Mr. Jeans, or is that suffi- sufficient for Mr. Jeans to speak on, on their behalf? I think that's going to be it. All right. We will then open this up to public comment. And I see the first hand raise is that of Mr. Tam. Mr. Tam, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Much appreciate it. First and foremost, I, I'm the neighbor in the back or to the north, according to the map. I'm at 18030 Arley Drive in the back. I think I will have the property that has probably the most sharing with parcel two in the back there. I, I guess my question really is with respect to drainage. While not a visible thing, it could have a, a visible effect. And, and my question really is with respect to drainage, we get a lot of water running through from, I guess it would be parcel one, parcel two, going down to our property at 18030 Arley Drive. And would the drainage somehow cause a rerouting such that the trees themselves would have to be removed in some way? Where is the drainage going? And forgive me, I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand a lot of the specs in the, the, the maps here. And that is a question for Mr. Jean or the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tam, and I, we appreciate your concern. It was a concern with respect to the Seaborn lot that was reviewed some number of months ago as well. And the sheet that I think you want to focus on is the Westfall Engineers Sheet that has a preliminary grading and drainage plan. But I'm happy to bring Mr. Jeans back to address concerns regarding drainage. But it may be appropriate for us to run through the public comment and have Mr. Jeans address all the concerns at one time. So he's not having to come back after every member of the public speaks. Is that fair with you, Mr. Tam?
Yeah, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that you wanted to comment on, Mr. Tam, other than the, the drainage concerns?
The only other thing I would mention, and I'm highly appreciative of, is that Mr. Jean, as the agent for the applicant, has graciously reached out and has have acknowledged I've started conversations about how to minimize any disruption and also started talking about the good neighbor fence. So I commend him for that. So it's, it's really more of a comment, and I appreciate his style.
Well, so do we, and we thank you both for working cooperatively on these things. That's the best way for a good project to get approved. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tam. Anybody else from the public that wants to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I'll know to call on you. The strikers, please, go ahead.
Hi, folks. This is Mark Stryker. My wife and I live at 18020 Arley Drive, right next door to the Tams. We share that bottom, bottom part of the fence line, property line. And if you notice the contours, we're kind of, not only does the runoff come north, south to north, but also west to east. So we're sort of at the lowest point of the property is, is where we join the property under discussion. And so because we're downhill, the three comments or concerns, I guess, are all about that, right? It's about the drainage. It's about the sightlines. But I'll start like Mr. Tam did and, and just commend the, the sort of the, the spirit of the approach and some of the real details. I feel Mr. Jeans has looked out. You know, you can see all the trees that he's retaining down there. That's really important for us. He's not using minimum setbacks, but things like that. So I really appreciate and feel that he's taken all of that into consideration. That said, you know, we do have drainage issues. We've installed equipment and devices to kind of keep the drainage from hitting our retaining wall, from hitting the pool. But under certain circumstances, under heavy rains, right? I still have to crank out the, the sandbags. So my concern on this was initially that the, with all the hardscape and things like that, that there'd be more water running towards our yard. Mr. Jeans, I think, has explained to me that he's tried to do some things to divert the water and, and diffuse the energy. And I just want to make sure that that, you know, stays in the plans as we go, as you review them and go forward, that we're not going to get more runoff than we do today, is my hope. Because otherwise, I'm going to have to do some retrofitting myself to address that. So that's, the drainage is one, and then, of course, the sightlines. At this time, we don't really have a fence between our property and 18061 because my wife's parents lived there for years and years and years. Rosemary Pierce worked for Montessorino as well for a good stretch. So we haven't had a fence to speak of. So because this construction is going to start, because we're going to essentially be looking uphill at two properties now, two houses, right? The, currently, there's only one right at the top. Now there'll be a taller or a bigger one towards our property. We want to get going with a fence as soon as possible to help insulate us from the construction and things like that. So we've been talking with Mr. Jeans about getting a fence in place even before a lot of the property construction starts. I know it might be to the, to Huma's advantage to do that later, but we'd like to see that happen sooner, and we're trying to make that happen as soon as possible. So it's the, the sightlines, the drainage and the, and the fencing. But, but again, appreciate the spirit of the proposal. And really appreciate that it looks like we're, most of the trees down there will, will stay in place at the, at the north end of the lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else from the public that wants to speak, if they could use the raise hand feature, I'll know to call on you. Okay, I see nobody else from the public with the raise hand feature. If I missed you, I'm sorry. No. Mr. Jeans, if you could just come back for a moment and talk to us a little bit about the drainage. I think I understand what these drainage plans reveal. But if you could explain to those in the public and the other commissioners about what you have designed here by way of drainage to prevent water from shedding down toward the properties on Arley, that would be helpful to us.
Okay. Could you screen share me again, please? I don't, oh, share screen. There we go. Okay, so you were right in that the screen that I should go to to talk about drainage is the grading and drainage plan here. Firstly, the interesting thing is that the high point on the lot is about here. And at the moment, the driveway does run this way. If I go, sorry, if I go back to this one here, this driveway goes this way, and then this area of the property ends up either in Mr. Tam's house or garden here or in the Stryker's property, which is over here. So what we've tried to do is sneak a little bit further on to the, this property and arrange for, instead of the breakpoint being here, move the breakpoint back. So we're taking a little bit more drainage to the front than we were originally. So that's one thing that we've tried to do. So if I go back down to the, the drainage plan, what the plan is, is first of all, it is a requirement that no more than the existing runoff that is currently generated by the property run onto the neighbor's property. So we cannot cause any increase in runoff. And that is something that the engineering department of the city of Montessorino will check in both the plans and also in the implementation. This element here is called an energy dissipator. And what it does is it takes the water that is collected in this back half, some of which comes from the roof, and, and takes it into an area which is a series of rocks. It's about 26 feet long, I believe, about three or four feet wide. And it, it allows a lot of water to infiltrate into the ground and only runs off in really, really heavy rain. Now, what I would like to do, and it is not shown in the plan yet, is I want to distribute that a little better. I want to split it so that the water coming down this side, instead of running across here and going over there, I want to keep an energy dissipator over here and one over here to distribute the water a little more evenly across the back property line. And that is, in essence, what we're trying to do. So when the plans come back for this particular rear lot, I'm hoping that we will see two elements to split the water so that it's not all focused into this one corner area here. So fencing was one thing, oh, sorry, drainage was one thing. There were comments about sightline. We'll, we'll deal with that when we get to the house. Fencing as soon as possible, both Mr. Tam and Mrs. Stryker have expressed a desire for some fencing here. And as soon as we agree on a good neighbor fence, design and style and everything, I will ask Huma, and he's indicated that he would be amenable to this, to at least put this fence along here. I've got a slight difficulty in this area here. So the, the property on this side, where we also are looking to put a good neighbor fence, I can probably put a good neighbor fence from here and here, but we may have to leave what's in place there until the drainage infiltration is installed over here because it's too close to the fence to try and do that afterwards. So there is a fence there, albeit somewhat a dilapidated fence, but I think it will stand until we, we, we can put some drainage elements along here. They're similar to this, but of a different nature. And they deal with infiltration because Caltrans does not want us to put a ton of water just running down the driveway, which it currently does, out onto the Los Gatos Saratoga Road. They want us to infiltrate as much as possible and keep it on site and only bubble up out of that bubbler, the excess water that we cannot maintain or retain on site. So that's drainage pretty much as it relates to neighboring properties and fencing. And those, I think, were the two questions that came up unless you committee members have any additional questions.
I have a.
Go ahead. If you have another question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
From the public stuff.
I have a, oh, so should, are we still doing public? Should I wait?
No, no, no. Go ahead and ask Mr. if you have any questions.
Okay. I, I just, in looking at the energy dissipator, I'm not familiar with those, but it's right near the redwoods. Do those have some sort of root block? We have a perimeter drain that's been totally infiltrated by redwood roots. So the, on our property, the only thing that works are, you know, the closed PVC because anything that's like gravel, the roots just choke it out.
Right. This is an energy dissipator. Looks like a big shovel. Pipe comes into the back. That's the water coming in. You then spread the water out over a P, six inch PVC pipe with caps on each end and perforations all the way down. What it does is it takes the water that is being focused as it's come from the other parts of the property, spreading them out into an area 26 feet wide so that it trickles out as sheet flow and doesn't come in a big gush down a channel. So it's not really the same thing that you would be talking about. I absolutely agree with you. Roots get everywhere, and the redwood tree is about 30 feet this way. If I go back to the right picture, this one here. I've got about, oh, maybe 20, oh, I'm 15 feet in the corner. I'm about 30 feet here, so an average of about 20 something feet in the middle. And it, the, the roots from the redwood tree should not impact it because it's really just large boulders stopping the, the flow. stopping the the flow of the discharging water and slowing it down and making sure that it doesn't do any damage.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Jeans? Thank you again, Mr. Jeans.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close the public comment and opportunity for the applicant to speak as well. And I have one question for Jeanie that we all may be asking ourselves right now, which is to what extent are we evaluating whether this proposed map and the engineering that's associated with it is going to meet the standards and avoid additional water flowing to neighbors on Arley? Ms. Hamilton, is that part of our assessment tonight?
Well, I think, you know, staff's review of the proposal at the tentative map stage, the city engineer has reviewed it, and we've, you know, incorporated it any necessary conditions to ensure that, again, the drainage is dealt with per regulation, per policy and whatnot. So you're not expected to be those expertise in determining whether or not they've designed it to this right specifications. I guess, you know, that's really you know, the final review of grading and and development permits and improvement plans for the subdivision, once it gets to the final map stage.
So maybe I'll, I appreciate that. And I maybe I should ask it another way. Jeans has offered to put in another energy dissipator at the rear of the lot, which obviously would ameliorate some of the concerns communicated to us tonight. Is can our approval be conditioned on that, or should we leave that to staff engineering to evaluate?
You could recommend, you know, if the applicant is offering something up, you could recommend that the per the applicant's proposal include additional energy dissipators to the rear of lot to to further secure runoff. So you can include that in your recommendation to council, because again, you're recommending to the city council. You're not actually approving it, but you're recommending that they approve based on the conditions we put forth and any additional ones that you feel appropriate. And this sounds like something that, you know, maybe worthy of consideration, given that the applicant has also put it forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions, Ms. Hamilton, before we discuss amongst ourselves? Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. All right, Commission, I'm turning this back to us. Does anybody want to lead with their thoughts tonight?
I like your idea about putting an additional energy dissipator as a condition, because like you said, the applicant has put forth idea, and why not improve the drainage potentially a little bit for the back neighbors? If it's been an ongoing concern, given that they give up something in terms of privacy, improving the drainage a little bit would be nice, especially since the applicant seems willing to do it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just concur with that. And I can feel the the urgency to have a back fence put up as well, quickly.
My only other comment, I totally agree with what's been said about the drainage. I think that's great. And, Mr. Jeans, we totally appreciate your approach to all this. It really makes it just a nice way to do a meeting. But my only other comment is on that front wall, and I know it's there for a purpose for sound mitigation, but part of me just wants to make that radius of the corner just a little bit bigger so that there's a better sightline to the road. If you were turning right onto Saratoga, Los Gatos, it just seems like it's just so hard sightwise to get in and out of that driveway.
This is this is City Planner, Hamilton. I'm I'm going to go a little contrary to Mr. Jeans, although it was expressed that it's required for the noise. The 60 dB is really only required in the private yard area. And although they refer to this as a private front yard, typically the front yards of homes are not that area, which is to be protected at to 60 dB, otherwise we'd have walls all over the city. So it's the rear yard. So the final resolution as to where that wall needs to go is really going to be determined from an environmental standpoint, vis a vis the rear yard area of parcel one. Because again, as you know, both in La Hacienda or Montalva Oaks and the adjacent subdivision, the whole idea of that wall, although you may see some around, is further really under consideration from a aesthetics and policy standpoint. And I know that's contrary to what the applicant is, but again, that's nobody has a noise attenuation in the interior can be done through building construction techniques. And in the rear yard, that's the area that we want to protect at the 60 dB level, not the front yards.
Anything further, Heather?
Um, no.
Bobby, anything?
Um, so again, my question would be probably to Ms. Hamilton. So, you know, again, regarding the trees, right? So when the the property that that exists on this lot is removed, how can, is there a way that we can ensure that the existing trees are not damaged, like the ones that I know the applicant is planning on keeping them? So those trees that they're not damaged, is there a way that we can kind of make that like a like a sort of a requirement?
Yeah, there the the map in it of itself does not allow for any tree removals to happen. They are required to show it on tentative maps, but it's not actually serving as the tree removal permit. Once we get to the point of a site development permit, that's where we'll ensure specific tree protections, specific species finalize any approval for tree removals. We'll wrap that whole tree removal permit process into the site development permit process and ensure that all the appropriate conditions and requirements are included at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to review the proposed resolution. Essentially, the findings that were asked to be made tonight in order to approve this application is that that the map is consistent with the general plan, that the results in lot sizes, which are consistent with zoning in that area. And that, notwithstanding the fact that the subdivision lies within the designated scenic corridor, the types of features that we would not want to place in the scenic corridor, such as service yard, utility tanks, parking areas do not exist here. With the exception of the driveway, everything will be out of view from the highway. And there were some additional photos, as you might have seen, for simulations over time, which gave you some idea what this might look five to 10 years from now. So that was appreciated, too. I think that the two conditions that I would like, and I think we're all on the same page about, is that we encourage the applicant to consider installation of an additional energy dissipator on that second parcel in the rear. And also to reach some agreement with the Tams and the strikers regarding installation of a fence before construction commences, so that their properties are disturbed as as little as possible. Can we make those as additional recommendations, Jeanie, to a motion to approve?
Yeah, again, as a as a reminder, it's a it would be a motion to recommend to the city council approval with the standard and and special conditions as presented, as well as these additional two conditions of an additional energy dissipator as proposed by the applicant to the on the the rear western side of parcel two, as well as the installation of a rear good neighbor fence in prior to commencement of construction. If they come to an agreement sooner than that, that's that's great. I'm not sure we can force them to do it before any final map happens or something. I mean,
Okay, any commissioners have, we'll make those recommendations if everybody's in agreement and entertain a motion to recommend approval to the city council, unless somebody has something more they want to offer in in relationship to this particular application. Anyone? All right, then I will move that we recommend approval of the subdivision map as presented and recommend, in addition to that, that an additional energy dissipator be located in the parcel two in the northwest corner of that lot, as well as a fence with the neighbors along Arley prior to construction. And the findings that are reflected on the proposed resolution, including the fact that this is consistent with the general plan, that the lots are of the appropriate size, and that the impact, notwithstanding being on a scenic quarter, is minimal are made. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, if you could do a roll call, please, for us.
Hey, Commissioner Zeitler?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrington?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker? Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharma?
Aye.
Chairperson White?
Aye.
That motion passes five zero. And just to let you know, this will be scheduled for city council the evening of April 6.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton, and thank you, Mr. Jeans, and thank you to all the neighbors that came and spoke. And and I really, we really appreciate the cooperative approach that everyone has taken toward this particular project and hope that continues. So so thank you all. With that, are there any other items? I don't believe there's anything more on our agenda tonight.
Just that two additional commissioners need to contact me for their iPads. Commissioner White and Commissioner, Chairperson White and Commissioner Booker, send me an email, coordinate a time, and I'll be more than happy to bring them out to you, with the exception of Friday. I will not be around Friday.
Okay, sorry. I had some surgery this week. I that's okay. Big cast and trying to get along. So I apologize. I should have done that.
I'll come to you.
Anything else before we adjourn, folks?
I'm just a quick, a quick note. I think last time you had asked about the the conference. So I did find out information on that, and I sent it to Michelle. So I think she's she's, I think she's sent an email to everybody who wants to register. I think I believe it's next week.
Yeah, I got an email just before our meeting and wondering. So you should be all set for those that want to attend.
Cool.
And if you if you don't, it's a Planning Commissioners Academy for that Thursday and Friday. If you're interested, let Michelle, the city clerk, know, and she'll get you signed up. Okay, I'm going to move to adjourn. Second?
I second that.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hey, thank you.
All right, guys.
Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. Bye bye.